We had proposed sites, they looked at proposed sites for us to go through. Um, and we kind of landed on, on this site here over several meetings. Um, and then last summer, we did have a purchase agreement on it, and then now we're starting to work um, through some of the issues. I know, uh, Mr. First talked about the, um, gun range and the seven hundred and fifty feet. We've been working with them to see what that looks like. Um, so we can start design. What you see in front of you is a sketch plan. We have not started design whatsoever. So we waited until the bond referendum, which was done last Tuesday. Now we'll start design here after the new year, starting in January. So what you see there is just kind of a concept. But we didn't want to spend money from a district standpoint, um, on something that possibly couldn't happen. So now that is successful, now we'll actually get into the nitty gritty of what the building looks like, where the entrances will be, parking lot, fields, those sorts of things. That was just kind of a design for us to go off of and have the community to see kind of what it would look like. Now we're going to have user groups to really die, dig down and, and see what that will look like here, specifically here in the coming months. So. Um, with that, thank you, and, and we'll be available for questions.
Since, um, Mr. Germahausen is here this evening, maybe it's a good point to go through some of these recommended discussion points so that the school district can, uh, I understand we got, we got an email from Superintendent Funk this afternoon. Kind of got to the point, so, um, first of all, any, any, at least in my interpretation, if there's going to be a school in any city, any town, anywhere, it's gonna, more than likely gonna have to be rezoned. And, and I certainly don't have, uh, problems changing the land use zoning guidance. I don't know about others on the council, but that's, it's, I think, fairly rare, and maybe I'm speaking out of turn, that a predetermined place for a school is already zoned for, for schools. So I think that's a matter of the course.
I would concur.
Councilmember Baxter.
I would disagree. Um, I'm not, I'm not at a point where I would support a, a, a comp plan and change. Um, and I, I've been pretty consistent in my view on, on changing the comp plan when it's come up in the past. Um, and with this particular project, um, to me, there's just entirely too many significant issues, concerns, costs, potential costs to the city related to this particular parcel that I would, I would not support changing anything until there's more detail in, um, and some of these really significant issues are addressed. I also looked through our comp plan today and really wanted to understand, um, you know, that's our guiding document, and this is a parcel in our guiding document that's, that's been zoned rural. Um, it's not really in a spot that's convenient to any of our new developments. There's no infrastructure to get there. Um, I think, um, it definitely will change the character of the location. Um, it's very wooded right down and, um, represents the, the rural nature of Lake Elmo, and so, putting eleven hundred student building, um, certainly will change the character along with, um, roads and, and such. And so I'm certainly not at a place where I would support that change tonight.
Councilmember again.
I am not at a place this evening where I would change the future land use of this area. My concerns are similar, but in some respects, very different. Tenth Street is a very busy street as well as Lake Elmo Avenue. It becomes the major detour for I ninety-four. If anybody tried to get on Tenth Street, um, I live on the far end of the city, on the west end of the city. And, uh, anytime there is snow, rain, whatever's going on, or an accident on ninety-four or six ninety-four, Lake Elmo Avenue and Tenth Street are the detours, no matter what. And it's, it's extremely busy. Um, and I, I, the new school is much larger than our current school. And, um, I'm sure we will have more students there. I think everybody will have to talk about water. But that, uh, for me, is, it's not just an exchange of water use from one, one location to another, because I understand the school district.
There's other questions we'll get to. I was just, I was just trying to go down the list here.
Well, that's, I mean, I have several reasons at this point. Yeah, at this point, I don't support.
Okay, Councilmember Holtz.
So specifically to the land use and zoning guidance, I guess I would have a, a different take in that, number one. Lake Elmo does have a rich tr- tradition and history of our open green spaces. And to me, it only follows that it would be logical to have a school in an open partially wooded and very open area, that in this case also abuts the Washington County Park Reserve. And that creates great opportunities for students who vast majority are our own residents, uh, to have those opportunities that exist by building those connections with the county reserve. And I'm, I'm under the impression that uh, those conversations can easily be had. Would that be correct, Mr. Germahausen? So I would take the position that not only is it a great site for those connections, which our students need, especially, we saw what happened post-COVID, uh, with learning from home. Our students need to be outside. They need those connections with the environment, and this site creates those opportunities. As an educator myself, I fully support that aspect. From the transportation aspect, we have in our city guidance that it needs to be on a major arterial or collector road. That's our own requirement. So no matter what, it's going to be put on a road that already has traffic. It's kind of a juxtaposition there. Uh, we, we know from the county of this intersection, correct me if I'm wrong, it already had met the threshold for warrants for a, or it's, it's really close to the warrant threshold for a a, not a stoplight, for a
Signal system.
Traffic signal.
I'm sorry, I'm not remembering, so I'm looking to the engineer to see if he remembers.
I, I'm not aware of it.
Because there was Keats and Tenth that was.
Yeah, that's at a four-way stop already, or a three-way.
Yeah, and so I have every confidence that given, this site is forty-seven acres, given sitting in, in those meetings with the mayor, with Administrator Hant and the district, one of the advantages that the district was offering with this site is that it has the space to be able to make sure you can do the right of ways, that you can get your turn signals, that you can properly plan. And let's be honest, the current site limits that in, in countless ways, and it does create a safety issue. So to me, this site has the advantages that you would want for our youth who are going to this school, and to me, the comp plan is semi-solid. It is a guiding document. We try to adhere to it as much as possible in terms of here's the boundary. But we also specifically have the ability to change it when things that benefit the community come up. I would remind us that we also changed the comp plan in a heartbeat for the hundred eighty acres. Because that was something that we felt that would benefit the city by expanding the tax base, which is a public good. This also is, in my view, a public good, but I'll, I'll stick just to the, the land use topics for now.
Yes, Councilmember Hearn.
So I, I think a little bit more of a question for the school district here for kind of ga- gauging your level of support for change based off of the Washington County's recommendations that they made. It seems like a lot of the concerns are coming from the, the streetways, the parking, the, the traffic. Um, and there were quite a few concerns that Washington County had. Reviewing that document, like you said, this is a very high-level sketch. It's not a plan. There's, that's going to start here in January. What's the school district's take on that? I mean, do they feel like they can meet a lot of those, or improve a lot of those concerns that they had?
Excuse me. Um, absolutely. We actually had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with the city, with the watershed, with the county, with the fire, with everybody here, and kind of went through a lot of those documents that you see. And especially with the county that you referred to, is going through kind of line item by line item, starting to have initial conversations. Some of them we could address right there, and they were done. For instance, if you look at the, the Washington County, they wanted us to have one entrance in and out for both buses and cars. You know, and then we talked through it, kind of what the bottleneck would be. We talked to the fire and talked about the size of the building that would require two different entrances. So even though at the time, the letter said we're going to have one entrance, and after that conversation, we're like, nope, it makes sense to have two, probably one off Lake Elmo Avenue and one off Tenth Street, you know, so we kind of worked through that item. We can able to establish that one's done, we can move on into the next one. So we've already begun those conversations with all the different organizations and entities. Um, and some of them we, we worked through that day, and some work and continued to work through, but there wasn't anything there at the meeting that, from our perspective, we couldn't work through.
Okay. Great, thank you.
So the county agreed to two entrances?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
There are workable solutions, I believe. So the next, uh, kind of land use group stuff was council support, change the Musa boundary. I'll start off with this and, and say that, uh, initially, that's, uh, I, I have personally a hard one with this because I have had developers come to me before, and I've said, there's the Musa line there, right? So, um, extending sewer there is somewhat, it's an internal conflict I have there. I certainly believe that, you know, as, as, uh, Oakland Middle School is on septic, I think it's possible to do it on septic. It may not be preferred, but, um, I would hope that, I mean, there's newer types of, um, packaging plans that are more efficient than, in that manner. I would hope that, that we could work something out there. Um, that's me personally, I've already talked to developers, I said, there's, you know, can't bring sewer there because there's Musa line. Even though, you know, I want to keep the school in Lake Elmo and work through solutions on these, so that's kind of, for me, what I struggle with.
So with, with, uh, uh, question off of that, with the Musa boundary, would that just impact, or could be mitigated by putting in the se- the, the septic on site?
You would not have to have it in a Musa if you had septic on site. And you could still service it with city water.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be in the Musa to be serviced by city water. As we've done with Torrey Pines and Cardinal Ridge and, uh, Wilson Valley, they're all outside of the Musa, right? So, um.
All right.
Well, so maybe just again, to follow up with the city, because I know, like, again, that was, I think Jack was the one that was recommending that in his comments. Again, is that something, as you guys look through it, that that's even something that you'd entertain?
In an ideal world, we'd like to be hooked up to city sewer and water. Um, we do have buildings currently, other than Oakland, we do have other buildings that are on, um, septic as well for, for sewer. So that is something that we can do, and we're, we're perfectly, um, happy to do that. Um, but our preference would be city sewer and water, but we would be ready to do a, a septic if that's necessary.
Councilmember again.
I also have, uh, met with developers for that site and, um, have made decisions not to allow them to bring sewer on that site because it's outside the Musa. And I think it's interesting that the Met Council talks about, well, for this individual use, maybe we can get around that. My concern then is when the next developer comes in on land that's outside of the Musa and says, what about me? So I have, I have some issue with that because we're going to have somebody come back in and say, well, the school got to do it, and we want that now, and if we don't do it, then we're in, in the midst of a lawsuit.
Is there, is there some, does the Metropolitan Council, or is there some language that they use that allows that transference of, as, as it was said, an island of Musa for schools versus private development?
Mayor, members of the council, that wasn't limited to schools. The, the question to the Met Council was simply, is it possible to extend the Musa to this site, or what, you know, just to this site as opposed to, because I, what my concern was from a density standpoint is what are the ramifications for the city's density?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, if we had to make a contiguous Musa, we would have to bring additional parcels that would be likely guided for residential and impacting our density. And so the question was, can we just do the Musa if, if we were to approve the extension just on this property? The answer to that was yes. So theoretically, it doesn't necessarily depend on the type of the land use on the site. Uh, theoretically, the city can approve that.
And it wouldn't impact the density uses?
That's correct, because the, the land use here is, is institutional, and so there's no residential use of that property, and therefore the, the, the land we're bringing into the Musa is not adding to the developable land in the Musa area in Lake Elmo.
So if it was a, if it was a private development with housing or whatever, that would impact because it's, it's not quote un, it's not institutional.
Correct.
Yeah, Councilmember again.
But the sewer usage is going to be significant with a school on that location. So why would that not impact? Then, because they're looking at sewer usage if you have homes, so why would, why would they, why would they get a pass?
So if I were to compare it to water, because since we've been talking about that issue a lot, right? If, maybe, I'm hoping this will help. So we've talked a lot about the seventy-five, ninety requirements on a, for water, right? Seventy-five per capita for residential, ninety overall. And so when it comes to sewer, and they talk about the three units per acre average density across the Musa, it's only about those dwelling units. So it's just the residential side of it. It, it doesn't, it, there's a whole different calculation. Um, in the comp plan, it'll talk about numbers of jobs and those type of things, where they keep track of the non-dwelling, um, sewer uses.
Maybe to, council, uh, maybe to add on to that, the, the, you know, if the applicant were to move forward with a Musa extension, what we would be looking at is not limited to the residential part of the comp plan. We would be looking at the wastewater chapter and what an extension of the Musa boundary would mean for the, the whole comp plan. It's not limited to just, uh, the residential piece.
Okay. You just, you just confused me more, but I'll catch up. Councilmember Holtz.
So in that same vein, and one of the reasons why I, I support this, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm eighty-two percent sure I'm right on this. If the proposed site they had was already in the Musa, and there's something that we had future zone for medium density, and we took forty-seven acres out of something that we were thinking was going to handle future growth, and we're now taking it out and making it institutional, would we then be required to offset it within our comp plan and find places for those future residents somewhere else?
So, I maybe.
I was going to say no, and I, I think the important distinction here, so we have the three units per acre within the Musa, and then our guideline for outside of the Musa is the, um, one per ten across the whole area. So you have some that are more dense, and you have some larger farms that are bigger. And so it's not, we're not, you know, we're taking away, what, egg is, or egg is maybe even one per forty? So, you know, you're taking away one future potential house. That's not very significant if you were to make this institutional. Is that the comparison?
No, no, so say if instead we were talking about something that was already in the Musa, that was future zone for medium density.
Okay.
And, again, for the public, I'm throwing this site out there not for any actual reason.
I don't understand.
Saad Farm, south of Oakland Middle School. That is future zone to handle well over a thousand residents. If instead, hypothetically speaking, extremely hypothetical, this was the site we were talking about, wouldn't we then have to re-upzone somewhere else to accommodate the lost capacity?
So we have over three units per acre already, and so we could do that calculation. We found that taking something out of, you know, there's probably not going to be that significant a change. So we would have to do that. The other thing, if I remember the code correctly, schools are allowed already in the medium-density, high-density zoning that's there, and so there's not a, not a change there. And, and the comp plan, when we approve it, it just talks about providing for the ability to things, to, for things to develop, like, you know, affordable housing is often tied to our high-density residential areas, for example. It doesn't require those things to be there, right? Because you have a number of uses that are allowed in each of your zoning districts.
So the Met Council would not ask us to re-zone elsewhere to accommodate zoning that we created specifically to meet a estimated demographic-based population estimate?
So if we were to go to the Saad Farm, we would not be going back to Met Council for a comp plan amendment. So it wouldn't be until you're working on your twenty-fifty comp plan update, and you're looking at everything holistically.
So it, it would affect us just down the road.
Well, so again, maybe. So remember, the council, um, not Councilmember Hearn, because it was before him. The rest of you might remember, you, um, approved a change for the Amira apartments to high density. So you, you are, you have already added some. You've got some extra capacity now. Again, I don't, I can't get down to the details of the numbers if it's a one-for-one. But when we did that, you, they didn't make you take it out somewhere because you added it. And so that's where I, I guess that was maybe an example, if that helps.
Thank you for the clarification. So in regards to my sentiment on this, I guess I still come back to our hundred and eighty acres. We chose to put that in a sewered area specifically for the public benefit of the city, in this case, to expand our tax base. And I am all for consistency, and I feel the same concept applies in this aspect as well. In that, we, we, we know sewer in the long term benefits the, a large user such as this far more than septic. There is a cost implication, which is not ours by the city, it's borne by the district. But a portion of that is our own taxpayers here in a portion of Lake Elmo. But either way, I'm, I feel pretty strongly that we've already consistently been willing to change our Musa when it benefits the public good. So I would, I feel strongly about being consistent on that.
Councilmember Baxter.
I'm not sure that I support, uh, bringing Musa to this, this spot. I, I think I follow the, the conversation here, but I would disagree that, that this is not applying a fair and consistent approach to some of these decisions we're making, and, and I'm not sure that the one hundred and eighty acres is a good, um, comparison in this. I know that we've had developers that have approached us on this parcel, um, wanting water and sewer, and, and, you know, we've, we've not entertained that. And so if we were to apply a consistent approach, we would have extended or offered to extend the Musa for those developers that would actually be bringing tax revenue in. And so, um, I, I, I don't like the idea of having an island of, um, area that is, um, simply connected to, um, the system and not, um, following the path that, that's always been the standard with bringing it through developments and connecting as you go. And so, um, I think the other part of, of being fair and consistent is, um, by doing this, we set a precedent, and what does that mean for the future? Um, and, you know, as I make my comments on all of this, I, I want to make it perfectly clear that I'm not against the school, and I'm not anti-kids, uh, which I know some may, may come and say, well, you just don't like the kids. Um, that's not what this is about. This is about the city. Um, and, and making sure that we're making decisions that are right for all residents um, in the city that we can apply consistently across whether it's a, a public facilities, um, land use, or, um, a, a multifamily development. I just don't feel that extending Musa to this parcel, uh, is being consistent or fair, um, with, with other developers.
So can you bring up that other sheet, please? Thank you. So we've kind of gone through
First two.
And kind of the, the third one.
Can we talk about the elephant in the room, which is water?
Want to talk about water? Yeah, we can talk about water. Would you like to start off talking about water?
Sure, sure. Happy to talk about water. So, um, we've been talking about water for years, and I think, um, in our meeting last week, we made it pretty clear um, where we, we kind of land on development and our water situation. Um, in that we simply can't continue to develop in this city when we don't have water. Um, we're already over our appropriation, and so how much further would a school push us? Um, and what does that mean then if we were to extend water to a school when we have essentially denied, um, developer who wants to come in, and, and may decline future developers, um, because of the premature development clause, which I think absolutely applies to this? We don't have water. It, it pure and simple. And I know in, in the communication we got from, from Superintendent Funk, there, there seemed to be a miscommunication or, or lack of communication about our water situation in Lake Elmo, which is really surprising to me since Councilmember Holtz has been involved in um, the, the planning of these facilities for years, and, and is most definitely very versed in, in water in Lake Elmo, and has been over the years. So I was, I was quite taken aback that, um, the school district was not made aware of any of our water issues until September of this year.
All right.
Can I respond?
Well, let me just say that early conversations with the school district, probably did not touch base on water to the extent that they have recently, because we were in the midst of trying to secure new appropriations through legislative measures, and still continue to, to do that, and have, have some things happening in the near future that might shed some more light. That being said, from, from water is, is an important issue, and I, I, I'm still on the stance that we're not short on water. I, I'm, um, I guess, even though I don't have a legal stance on it, it's, it's just contrary to logic for me. And, uh, for a school, I think it's important that it gets, has water used there. I'm sure that if, you know, on city water, and if at certain times, there's, there's different kinds of systems that could be put in place for the safety of the students, if that's ever becomes a concern. The, um, but I, I think about, um, making sure that it's fire-safe and not being on a, on a well for that is, is very important for me. Um, as a, as a large building and what that would take, knowing that, uh, tenders really don't last, last that long for fire suppression. Um, and there is, there is something to be said, and, and I guess that would take future, uh, discussions with the school district with regards to, you know, the building that they're currently in, and the building that they'll plan to, um, that they would like to, uh, occupy as far as the delta and what the difference in water use. And I, and that is a significant difference between, say, a new business coming in and, and one moving, per se, to an area, at least for me. So that's, um, I would be, I would like to explore solutions in, in making sure that, um, a school would have city water attached to it if we can mitigate some of the issues with quantity based on what would be removed from the system in the old school. Councilmember Holtz.
Thank you. Um, so timeline-wise is, is interesting. So, um, Superintendent Funk did outline, so all councils are aware of the timeline of some of those meetings, uh, such as, uh, August twenty-two is when they did the purchase agreement, but prior to that, meetings in June and February. The council itself, so we, we lobbied and got statute changed in May in the hopes that, and we felt pretty sure that that meant that the appropriation itself was going to change. The council approved thirty units on August fifteen at Prairie Sky. We approved a new development at that time, after the conversations that the city had with the district. So this council agreed five-oh to approve new housing. If I do the math, thirty units at, if I'm conservative, at ninety gallons a day, say there's two people per unit, so spouses, parents, and one child. Now, I haven't gone for three or four. If we extrapolate that, it's two point, excuse me, it's one point nine million gallons a year. Uh, based upon the information provided here, the district is estimating conservatively, so at worst case, six gallons per day per kid, uh, and they're not going to get to, if I recall from being on the facilities team, eleven hundred kids, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Germahausen, but eleven hundred kids is five to ten years from now at this site. Correct. So sixty-six hundred gallons a day, and based upon the number of school days, this site is looking at, uh, one point zero eight nine million gallons of water. So just about half of what we approved already for Prairie Sky, when we knew we were already over the appropriation. So if a question is being raised as to whether the district So if a question is being raised as to whether the district was made aware by the city about our, our water, I think it would be important to note that we as a city approved a development at that exact time that was reasonably going to be used 1.9 million gallons a year. I guess I have a follow-up question for the district then. In terms of, because to me, the question is similar to what the mayor mentioned, it's the delta, change of use. To me, I see this not as a new business because last week, we didn't vote for or against, we tabled. So whether we vote for or against that business was going to come up down the road. We tabled it. So in this case, it's not a new development, it's a expansion of what is already there. Correct me if I'm wrong, the current school, while it's in the mid-sevens, in the past, it's been close to 900 students, correct?
Correct.
And the new elementary would not be even at that amount for still a few years, correct?
It'd be around there. It, it depends, you know, we're expanding some of the programs that we're looking at. Our, I don't want to get in the weeds a little bit, but how we, we do capacity has changed a little bit over the years. Back when it was up in the mid, upper 800s is we didn't have preschool in our buildings. So those rooms that are now preschool that are taken out of the capacity numbers were, were for the K, 96 population. There were some other programmatical changes that reduced the capacity because we use them for other instructional strategy methods within our rooms. So how we use the building is a little bit different, but yes, we have been around mid 800 before. And we've had boundary changes numerous times in the last 10 years just to try to reduce the number of students at, at Lake Elmo.
And I believe that estimate of six per kid was based upon Brookview, correct?
Correct.
Is Brookview a lead school? I mean, they're not like going above and beyond the most high efficient things possible, are they?
No, no, they're not.
Would the district be open to considering those options for going above and beyond for efficiency of toilets and sinks?
Yes, we'd be open to any energy efficient, green type of things. We'd be open to looking at some of those things, absolutely.
Gotcha. So I, thank you. I, I guess from my standpoint, obviously from the, the public safety standpoint for fire suppression and all that, but I'm not convinced that there would inherently be an increase in water usage. I'm not. I've been in Lake Elmo. The thing is being held together by gum and tape. And there are pipes in there that are 100 years old, other parts are not. I'm not convinced that this actually would be an increase in that when you consider new faucets, new sinks, new toilets, and the fact that in the past, we've actually had drastically more students at the highly inefficient school. I'm not convinced that this truly is an increase and I have no issue, given that we just approved a development using far more water than this, I have no issue connecting the water.
Let me ask you a question. So in the, the current building, I'm sorry, I'll get to you, Councilmember McGinn. Are the current building use high efficiency sinks, faucets, toilets, or is that still old school in there?
Most of them have been there for, for numerous years.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilmember McGinn.
If, I think the information Jeff, that you gave regarding the Prairie Skies, that's incorrect. I'd like the city administrator to speak to that.
Councilmember McGinn.
It may not have been a 5-0.
I think there's a, an important distinction. August 15th was the final plat for Prairie Sky. You approved the preliminary plat in March sometime, I believe. Since the moratorium came off in April, this council, I believe, has only approved one subdivision. That was the Frisbee subdivision. That what, didn't already have preliminary plat and development rights prior to the moratorium coming off in April. And that's when we started to have more discussions about whether or not there should be more development. So I think it would, he's correct that we did, we did approve the final plat. But as you all know, once they have preliminary plat approval, they have development rights.
And in that regard, we gave preliminary plat before the new legislation passed.
Correct.
Correct. Yep. Councilmember McGinn.
To the water issue. Maybe Councilmember Holtz was confident that legislative action was going to solve our water issues. And I would have hoped that it would have helped. However, there are two distinct issues. We went to the legislature for help to, to see if they could somehow be able to assist us in getting a new well and assist us in more appropriation. The mayor is very correct. The Lake Elmo has plenty of water in the aquifer. That's not the issue. The issue is we're not allowed to use that water over what the appropriations are. And with that, it came to the attention of council this last year that there is a $40,000 permit violation, per, per permit violation that the city would be responsible for, for any overages of that 90 rule. We are already over that and have been for some time. And it was clear that the legislature was going to try and help us with that. However, the legislative process and the district court that the DNR is saying that they are bound to is where our issue is. Because the, the legislative process has not been effective in helping with the district court ruling from White Bear Lake. That is where the issue of appropriation is for the city of Lake Elmo. And so from an ethical standpoint, for me, I will not move forward until we get some resolution on this water issue. We have a hearing that's in process now. That again is an administrative hearing. And even if that administrative hearing falls in our favor and helps us, it may not be effective until we can get some resolution at the district court level that will allow DNR to feel that they can increase our appropriation of water. That is just a fact. The mayor is correct. This is the most illogical thing I've ever been involved in. But there's pointing fingers back and forth. I thought it was very interesting that Superintendent Funk had indicated that the school district called or emailed, it looked like, emailed DNR and asked them if they would support a well there. And they simply wrote back and said, well, you should hook up to city water. So not only do they, are they saying no to us for increased water, so now we have an issue with the, the school. And regardless, this school is going to be larger. And we still have the previous building that we have to look at. And unless they're going to tear it down, we still, unless they're going to tell, tear it down, that is also water usage. This has, for me, has nothing to do with the school district. It has to do with us not being able to get permission to increase the amount of water that we can use within the city. Right across the street, we're looking at that same issue with two wells that are on advisory in Cimarron. PCA is saying you need to put them on city water and the DNR is saying, we're not giving you any more water. So until we get some resolution to that, I can't move forward with any future development until we find out where we land. Because if we can't increase, we can't increase our development.
I do believe there's solutions to this. And to the extent that, you know, the school district is very large and has some ability to work with the governmental functions to help move this forward, that could be part of the solution. And, you know, as I stated at the beginning of my statement, certainly there's some delta depending on what happens with that school down the road, right? If, if anything. So Councilmember Hearn.
Yeah, I got, I got a good laugh from that DNR comment as well. That was impressive. As far, and so Jeff, you kind of alluded to it here. What is the plan with the old school site? Because, and I guess where I'm going with this is, I think it's a great point of there's going to be much more higher efficiency use at the new school. And so if somehow it did equal out, we're not using more water, now the obvious follow-up would be, well, something's going to get developed at the old school and use water. Maybe I'm wrong on that, though.
Short answer is we don't have any definitive plans right now. Some of that would be kind of to see what happens here. And that's, once these building gets done, then we'll address that from there. But there are not any plans to use it for, you know, anything set right now. Those are things that we'll address.
And that's owned by the school?
Correct. Yes, we own the property. Yes.
Is there any type of park dedication that goes with a development like this?
No, go ahead.
We're like doing this. So there is parkland dedication requirements at the time of subdivision. However, the public facilities zoning district is not listed in the city's subdivision ordinance as a required district for parkland dedication. So the answer that I would give you right now is that no. With this particular zoning district that's proposed, there would not be a parkland dedication requirement. I would note to you that the school obviously made a comment in the narrative about the use of the, the facilities on site, though.
Okay. And I guess from, again, I mean, if, if this is a conversation with the school district of if there is some sort of use for the old facilities, which I guess honestly may look like knocking it down and it becoming parkland. Other than that, I just, I don't know what else would be no water use where we'd be adding it in one spot but taking it away from another. I, I want to support this. I just, the, the water thing is too big of a concern. And unless I'm, I'm off on the numbers here, I just, I don't see how, even if it is more efficient at the new school and has all of the best toilets, plumbing, everything, I just, I don't understand how we're going to not go even higher with our amount of water usage and be higher above the appropriated use that we already allotted. And I, I agree, I, you know, it's, I hate to say this, but maybe this is the opportunity to get more voices to talk to government about this issue that we're in in Lake Elmo. Because, I mean, this is a huge concern and now it's unfortunately, it's impacting the kids, you know? And that really hurts. So I just, yeah, this, I, I don't know how we can work with the school on, on figuring out if there is a way to make it net zero for usage for water.
Councilmember Holtz. Two things. It was interesting because last year, when the DNR had a presentation about their updated study and there was concern about would there be enough water to provide to businesses and schools, Judge Marinin was very upset that the discussion was even occurring and issued an additional statement saying, paraphrasing, that nothing in her order shall be construed to mean that water would be not provided to schools or businesses. I apply this in this case to also mean that the, the conversation involving a school, especially one that already exists and could on its own put additional kids in the current site and use more water and we would not be able to stop them. We would not be able to stop them. They would use more water. They could pack them in like sardines. There is no state law preventing it. They could do it right now and they would use far more water. So I, I guess I'm very, hmm, I, I, that's an interesting one. I guess a question for the district. Given the, the inkling of Councilmember Hearn on this, would the district be supportive of, it would probably be in the CUP language itself, but that this shall mean that there shall not be continued use of the current site until a future appropriation or surface water change is provided to the city. And I ask that, so I ask that because our water situation will change. It's a matter of when, because of the East Metro Water Group. So there will be a solution. That's going to have to go to the legislature. There's going to be a funding package. It might take 10 years. It might take 15. But this is not a permanent issue. This proposal for a school is going to last far longer than our appropriation issue. The issue is right now, we're out of alignment. So I guess my, my question to, again, would the district be willing to have that discussion about not having usage at that site?
Absolutely. We'd be willing to have that conversation.
That is greatly appreciated because I think that definitely alleviates at least two, two additional council member concerns.
Oh, go ahead.
Councilmember Vexer.
So regarding the, the 47 acres, I watched the school board meeting from August 22nd when the, the purchase agreement was shared and voted on, which was good. I didn't realize it happened on the 22nd. There was no communication with council throughout the entire year on this topic, which we were all blindsided when it became public that you purchased a property in Lake Elmo. So one of my questions would be, I'm curious, there were, there were conversations with other municipalities, Bayport, on what was happening with their school. But the school district never came to a council workshop and shared thoughts or to seek input from us. We've got a lot of complexities in Lake Elmo. I reflect back on when the levy was on the ballot and the superintendent at that time came to a workshop and gave a presentation, asked for support and made sure we were aware of what was being asked and how that money would be used. But with this bond, nobody from the school district came to council to even share there was a bond, what it was for, how it would be used, how, gathering any input. And so I'm curious, was that just an oversight on the school district? Or, I mean, you're replacing the Lake Elmo Elementary School, but didn't engage or collaborate, I would say, with the full council?
So processes actually started all the same. It was actually the same day in February that we went to Lake Elmo, met with the mayor, the city administrator there and, and the district staff. And about two hours later, we came here to Lake Elmo. And kind of just the, the, in the conversations with the Bayport staff and the conversations with Lake Elmo staff, they took two different turns. Conversation with the Bates, Bayport staff was because some of the land that we were talking about was actually city property and not an individual entity, that, that conversation changed in a hurry because it was not just buying a parcel and then bringing it to the council. It was trying to get public feedback of what they wanted to look at City Park to have, look and feel like. So, and the conversations with them, they recommended some of the, the city feedback and those sorts of things. Here at Lake Elmo, when we met with the, the staff here, was we looked at different parcels. We brought many different parcels to the table. They talked about some different ones and collaborated. We kind of talked about what would make the most sense between us here. So it was really based on the conversations. So we started out the same and then each conversation took a little bit different twist. But we really wanted to partner with each individual city to come to a mutual understanding to where we are today, having a successful referendum and be able to move forward with some parcels of land.
But do you think it was an oversight to not engage at least three members of the council? I mean, there's three of us on here who knew absolutely nothing about the school's plans until Councilmember Host posted it social, on social media publicly, announcing the school land purchase, which was interesting. But until that point, I would say there was three of us here who knew nothing about what was happening. And so that really took us aback and, and kind of blindsided us a bit. And so I'm just curious, in, in hindsight, would you have approached that differently, maybe, in engaging all of us in the process?
Quite honestly, if we did not make it to this, city, we apologize for the bond presentation. We did a lot of different cities. We were at Stillwater, we were at Bayport, we were at Woodbury, we were at Hugo. We went to a lot of different cities. So if we did not make it to this one, then.
But you were replacing our 100-year-old elementary school.
That wasn't oversight on our part. So I apologize.
So the other, the, the question I, I wanted to get at from the 8/22 meeting was the superintendent talked about the 47 acres. And because there's so much land there, it really provides the opportunity to expand and, and expand to add the early childhood to that land. And so how does that change the plan for this, for this land? I mean, how does that impact water? How does that impact sewer? If ultimately the plan is to continue to build on the site? So I think that should also be a consideration in how we look at the water situation.
Quite honestly, that's a future consideration for the district. So process wise, last spring, we had a facility design team that looked at all of our buildings from early childhood all the way through the high school and what were some of the needs district wide. From that, there were kind of 10 themes that emerged. And from that, we took a survey. So the, last spring, the, the design team finished. We took a survey to the community about all 10 items. Five of them were on the bond, five of them were not. And so when the survey came back, there was, was support for a lot of different items. One of them that had a lot of support that didn't make it was the Early Childhood Center in, in the southern end of the building, or southern end of the district, somewhere in the south. Currently, we have one that shares a parking lot with Stillwater Middle School. When the school board went to, to really said in June, what's going to be on the bond referendum, it was not so much what are nice to haves, it's what is needs to have. And looking at where our growth is, especially in the southern end of our district, in the Lake Elmo, Woodbury, kind of Afton, Bayport area, was really to replace Anderson, replace Lake Elmo, add on to Oakland. Because where do all those schools feed into is Oakland Middle School. And then lastly is, is upgrade our safety and security at the high school. Now, we did have a lot of support from the survey that said, hey, we would really like an early childhood building in the southern end of our district. The board decided, yes, that would be nice, but it's not a must-have. Now, in future considerations, there is some land. Is that a conversation we could look at down the road to say, if there's some space and if the council agrees, can we have that conversation? Absolutely. Today, as I stand here, that is not our plan right now, is to have that as part of this. We want to be able to build it, a Lake Elmo for our kids here opening. And also, I want to point out that it's opening the fall of 2026. So, it's not next school year or the year after. We're, like I mentioned earlier, we're very early in the design phase. So, the fall of '26 is really our target date.
Councilmember McGinn. I'm going to... We're going to tighten this up in a little bit, just on time.
For the engineer... I hope, Jack, you can help me with this. So... If, I mean, I personally think it may be in the best interest of the school if they could meet other things that a well and septic, given the state of our water situation, might be the best thing for them to do. However, do you know, or maybe Christina might know, who would be responsible? Because probably 90% of the... Probably 90% that well is going to be tainted, just like everything else down here. And would the state then be responsible for putting a GAC filter or a filtration on their system? I know they're saying, go, you know, go do this, but in lieu of the fact that we aren't... They're telling us we can't have any water, or more water. I'm just wondering if that might be a better solution?
A private well would fall under the jurisdiction of Minnesota Department of Health, and they're in a special well construction area, so they would have to build to those standards, those extra standards of a special well construction.
Which would mean the...
The deeper well.
School district would... Deeper well? And the school district would be responsible for that cost?
Yes.
And filtration, if it was necessary?
Yeah, or the state would step in on that front. I don't know. Either way, but it wouldn't be city costs if it was a private well.
Thank you.
Did you have one last thing?
I just...
Councilmember Hearn.
Councilman... Councilmember Beckstrom, I appreciate you looking out for me with the... I think I was one of the three that you're talking about. I guess I just, I don't necessarily feel that way. I think there was enough... We knew that this stuff was in the talks. I feel like I could have reached out, so I don't feel that way. I do appreciate that, though. And I think, just for me, the big takeaway with the... Because it kind of seems like maybe it is a little bit split with the water is, if it is going to increase our usage, I just, I... I want this to go through, and I want it to happen. But if it's going to increase the usage, I don't feel confident. If we can work with the school district, and it sounds like you guys are willing to do that, and if that keeps this project moving forward, you know, I'm all in favor of that.
I will say that, you know, I'm... To me, and I think a lot of the residents feel like it's important to keep Lake Elmo Elementary in Lake Elmo. And for the district and its community-wide, we do service... We do have three school districts in our city with probably, I don't know, 67% of it being in 834. But I really want to work towards solutions with the school district to... I think it's workable, and even with some of the hurdles and... Yeah, that's what I got to say. Yeah?
Just a question, I guess. In reading the email that was given to us by the superintendent, he basically said that if we can't give you substantial yes on this at this time because you have a less than week and a half on this land, I don't know that... I don't know that it can be resolved in a week and a half, given the extensive water issues. And so, I... That is my concern for, you know, for the school district. And he had indicated that if, basically, if we could not give you that assurance this evening, that they would look elsewhere. My hope is that the... If it can work here, that's fine. But under the conditions that we're at now, for me, it's very difficult. And I understand your position from the school district, that you're under the gun now with this contingency or whatever your purchase agreement says. But until we get some resolution on water in the city, it's very difficult for me to give a positive answer for you.
A couple of things with that. First up, the superintendent, there's a school board meeting tonight. So, obviously, he'd like to be here, but he has to be at the school board meeting. So, it's not that he didn't want to be here, but there's a board meeting. Second of all, we really, you know, have a 100-year tradition, a century-long tradition here, being in Lake Elmo. As a school district, we want to have a school here to serve the community and the kids that we've done for numerous years. We want to be here. With that said, we are kind of looking to see, where's the council at tonight? To say, is this something we can work through? Yep, great, we'll continue to work through it. If not, then, you know, let us know, and then we can look at other options outside the city of Lake Elmo. So, but we wanted to come here tonight and have this conversation to see if it's something that we can move forward with. But if it isn't, then to kind of give us a direction to say, you know what? Thank you, we appreciate it, but, you know, we need to move our efforts elsewhere.
I do know that purchase agreements can be extended. And I do feel, as I voted on the levy, that the indication that Lake Elmo Elementary School was going to be replaced in Lake Elmo. So, I'd hate to feel like I voted on something and it got changed at the school district level. That would be really a shame.
And if you look at the precinct, sorry to cut you off, but if you look at, just to break down by precincts, there's about 70% approval in Lake Elmo for this bond referendum. So, I think that's a sentiment of the community, was to try to keep the school here.
Great. Well, thank you for your time. That really took more than we intended, and so, but thank you for sticking around. Item number four is general engineering firm interviews and discussion. Do we want to take a little time to let them set up?
Do you want to take a little...
A little five-minute, and we'll have focus engineering present?